Test. I should be overhearing now. Yeah? Okay, great. Hey, Uli, how you doing? Alright, great. It's always difficult to get sound going here, but...
I can't hear anything. Oh, look, here is fuzzy clicking.
I guess, there. No, I don't think the meeting will be in voice. We'll be in voice. Only when he's talking?
I'll be, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll be, I'll be doing the voice like last time and you guys can just send me your questions by IM.
Okay, surfer boy.
Surfer boy, I don't know. You know, huh? Okay.
Yep.
Uh, who's this, Susan?
Yes.
Alright. How's it going, Far? Yolong? I'll, CK. CK, does CK talk or no?
Sometimes. I've only heard her once. I, it depends if she's with, you know, got other things going on in the background.
Do we have to do our, our questions in text then?
Uh, yeah, because it's easier for me to be able to get them. I mean, yeah, you, you have a point. I mean, maybe, let's, let's start, let's just start by, uh, IM. And then, uh, it could work with that too far. I agree.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, because I'm dyslexic, it's really hard for me to type.
Oh, yeah, you know what?
And subsequently, I get into a, I'll probably type a load of gobbledegook.
You know what?
And then, uh, you won't be able to answer my question, and I'll get frustrated and come up and down.
You know what? Okay, so, everybody send their questions by IM except for Far. So, how's that?
Okay.
Alright, we'll do it that way.
Far gets the special chair.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't feel singled out at all. That's very generous of you. Thank you very much.
And, you know, feel, and I know we got a lot of beer and alcohol around here, so just feel free to partake, so...
Ooh, I've been saving mine for now. I'll wait, though. Beer and avocado don't go good together.
Beer goes good with anything, believe me. I've been there.
Salty avocados, right?
Anything.
Yeah. Beer makes you want anything afterwards, too. I will eat anything.
Alright.
I thought we started the meeting at 11:00.
If you wanna wait till 11:00, nobody will be here, so...
Okay.
It starts at 10:00.
Okay.
But you remember, you remember, Susan, regardless of your chatting or voicing, your quota. Never forget that.
Oh, my god. Where is that word counter?
It's around here somewhere. It will automatically...
Where is it?
It will automatically, it will automatically gag you at 10,000, I think.
I found it, and it sounds like this.
It's not, it's not 10,000 a day, it's 10,000 an hour, you know, so...
I wish I had a word counter, because it would help writing a book about all of my memoirs that I'll tell you about starting at the age of three.
Wow, that's, uh, no, thank you. No, thank you. So, alright, we'll just give people five minutes or so to get over here, then we can start.
Okay.
So... Lots of changes happening. Lots of changes.
Oh, boy.
The biggest one is it won't be named Campbell Coast anymore. No, I'm joking.
It's now gonna be called spinning, spinning something.
I'm glad you're joking.
Uh, who was that that just talked?
Owl.
Owl, okay. We still, we still haven't heard from CK yet. Okay, we'll see what happens there. She's...
Yeah, because she should be able to hear us.
Yeah. Here, Fenella. Let's see, who else do we have here? Van Deer? Vandevere, okay.
Vandevere.
Yeah, I don't expect the same crowd size. Um, it's just, just a follow-up. But, you know, I'm just gonna try to do, like, tail meetings every month or so, just so that, you know, everybody's on the same, you know, knows what's going on, and can answer questions, stuff like that.
Alright.
So, but at least, you know, whoever's here, they, they understand it, and they can pass the word on. And I'm, I think, Uli probably will probably do another video, I'm not sure. Hey, Frank. Hey, Kitty. Alright, we'll give it a few more minutes when people come.
Is, is it called the Dock, or is it called something else now?
The Dock? The Loft, right.
We're over here at the Loft, come on.
Lock, lock, the lock.
Well, when, when, when I first, when I first came here, I was sending out, I was actually calling this place Campbell Creek, because that's, that's some, that's a place that's like right near where I live, so I kept on mistakenly calling it Campbell Creek. And then I was calling this the Loft, too, so like, I don't know what was going on. But I think I got it, I got that all cleared up now. Hey, Soup. So, give a couple more minutes, more minutes, we can start. Probably be a quicker meeting unless you guys have a lot of questions.
I have a list of 15.
Oh, great. I'm, I'm sure you do, yeah.
No, I don't.
You will, though, by the end of the, by the time we're done.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just, I'm gonna just listen. I'm not much of a talker, you know? During meetings.
Are you? Okay. We'll see.
Oh, hi, CK. Oh, Jesus Christ, people, thanks a lot. No one's on my side right now.
A few more minutes, we're gonna get some stragglers in at the last second, thinking that you have a set, so... Yeah, Susan's making the big time. Next, next week, is it? Two weeks, yeah.
The 18th.
She's going, she's coming, she's moving up in the minor leagues to play with the big, big boys.
Listen, and, and to think that I'm in the minor leagues, suddenly. I keep getting preklempt on that one. I'm like, oh, what am I gonna say now?
Uh, so don't worry, I have, there's some videos between, on each side of you, so you'll be fine.
I'll show them how it's done.
I'm totally joking, so...
Alright, I'll turn my voice off.
Okay, oh, Far's the only one allowed, so... So, this is Manuela, she's my partner in crime. Hey, Manuela. Okay, so, um, we'll just give another minute and then start. Okay, so... Alright, so let's just go ahead and start. Okay, so basically, I wanna go over, so basically, you know, like, trying to do a follow-up from last month, obviously, that was the first week, and everything was, uh, just starting out, so we've made a lot of progress. I'll go over those details. But again, uh, it's important to take questions and answers to see what you guys want to, uh, what, what you guys have, or questions about what we have been doing, or what we will be doing. And, and go, go from there. So, um, so I'll be taking questions, uh, only by IM, except from Far, you know, you can ask them in, in, uh, on voice, so... Any questions, I will wait for them, but I can start with any type, uh, I'll just start with what's going on. Okay, so the very, so we made a lot of progress in a lot of different areas based on what I talked about a month ago. Um, you know, the village has expanded, uh, you know, the aerodrome is up and running by Boo, he did great work on that. Yuki has taken that over. Uh, CK now is a part of the team, uh, she and Owl are working on, you know, CK does the, uh, the events and community stuff, Owl is really running, making this village run smooth with, uh, shops, and we also have residential now, and we have, we have our first renters in there, too, so it's really, really good. Okay, so, um, I will, uh, take questions as I see them, but I'll just go over some, 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 I'll just continue going on. So, we added roadside rentals, uh, that's good. Um, there's still a lot of stuff, a lot of sims that I really haven't been able to, uh, get to. And, uh, just one second. Uh, but there, you know, we, we, there, there are plans of those, and, uh, it's just a matter of getting to those, there's so much to be done. Uh, but I think it was very important to, uh, it was very important to, to, Owl had, Owl was doing everything, events and activities, but that was way too much. And the whole community aspect was, uh, just missing from this, so CK is, is one, is gonna be a wonder, is wonderful to be able to take that on. She is very close to a lot of people, and she had great ideas. Yuki, uh, same thing with the aerodrome, um, she has her own, like, uh, uh, tra, you know, travel stuff that she does, mainland tour, and so she is really a good fit for that, uh, and she's already rolling with changes there. So, I'm excited about what we're doing. I haven't really even marketed this place that much besides, uh, you know, uh, across my other estate, uh, so, but we are already, the one of the things, the goals, I think we had to, for this to be successful, is to see numbers increasing in our group. And that's been happening. When I, when we, when I first came over, there was attrition, which is, uh, which I expected. I expected some, uh, attrition there, and that, our numbers went down, but it's been going up now since then, and I expect them to continue to go up as we make improvements across the board, and again, I, I wanna work with everybody, so you know, even, some people might not, you know, enjoy all the stuff that we're doing, or like what's going on, but believe me, I'm trying to keep everything intact like it was before, but just make improvements and make this profitable, so it doesn't disappear. So, that's, that's, that's my same goal. Nothing's changed like that. So, if you heard otherwise, or from other people, then that is, that is not true, okay? So, um, you know, I try to avoid conflict, issues like that, I, you know, I, I, I don't wanna get involved, and, you know, everybody has an opinion about stuff, but, um, I, I'm not gonna get involved in those types of discussions, you know, otherwise it distracts, uh, from what we're trying to do. So, I think Susan had a question here. Susan says, "One question about notices. Do they need to be sent out more than once, or can the second half of a DJ set, set be..." Okay, so, here, here's the thing about the notices, that's a very good question, Susan. The issue with chat is that only people that are online can see the chat. Notices, if people come on and they can, they catch a notice, like, after, uh, you start, or second, they can make it over here. If they're, if they don't see it in chat, they won't, they won't come over here at all. So, that's why it's important, that's why if you notice other groups, or D, uh, music groups, DJs, they always send a second, um, midway through notice to get other people here, and that's important. We want people to come here, we want people to see your set. Uh, only sent in by chat won't work, because we only cast, we only can catch people right then and there. Does that make sense? Okay. Uh, so, but that's, that's a really good question. Okay, so, that's a good lead on, in, into what was going on. Okay, so, the, the lead in here is that the lock right here, we were very, very successful this weekend in this event. We had eight-hour of music event. For six hours, we were hitting the 40 mainland peak, uh, limit here, and I think that is great. I think we, some of these DJs can easily pull in, like, 40 by themselves. So, so here's the problem with, here's the, so what needed, needs to happen is it needs to be a change, and this is the reason why. We have mainland limits in a lot of different ways. One, we have no control over the sim, right? Zero control, uh, we can't reboot the server, we can't do anything, that's a problem. We're gonna run into limits, people are gonna start complaining about not being able to get in, DJs are gonna, DJs are struggling to get in themselves. We were lucky to get the DJs in. Uh, second of all, it's too easy to grieve in this type of environment. We, we, we don't have as much control, um, so we wanna eliminate that factor, too. Uh, we don't, it's, so, and so just, I mean, you guys are probably aware of this. Somebody can load this setup with campers, and nobody can get in, and it could be on, on non-Campbell, Campbell Coast parcels. So, there's an idea for you, just in case you wanna grieve, that's a way to do it. But anyways, um, we, we, so, there's a lot of limits to, uh, there's a lot of problems by keeping the lock here. The lock, the main reason, the, one of the reasons we have the lock is not only to provide great music and stuff, but also to attract people to Campbell Coast. And that is what it will do. It will attract people to here. The lock and this place is just a landmark. It doesn't matter where the lock is, is, because we can always try, it's all about Campbell Coast. And so, what I'm leading into is the lock is gonna be moved, um, the first of, it's happening right now. Uh, Kitty is working on this in an estate sim. So, the lock is gonna be moved to where we have no limits, no problems, we're gonna be able to accommodate twice as many people. And, um, so this way, we can get more traffic, we can get more numbers, we can get more people knowing about Campbell Coast, that's what we wanna do. It's not gonna, it's not gonna affect this village at all. Some might think that it's gonna affect this village, it's gonna make things, it's gonna make things, it's not gonna be as good. It's gonna make it just the opposite way. We're gonna have more traffic over at the other place, this estate. We're gonna have the same look and feel village, we're gonna have signs to be able to go anywhere in Campbell Coast. We don't lose anything, we actually gain things, and we don't have to worry about all these types of problems that we will if we kept the lock here. Okay, does that, does that make sense? If anybody has questions about that, uh, you know, feel free to, you know, ask me, uh, in IM, and I'll take that. But that's, that's what we're doing. The first event is gonna be at September 11th, so we have enough time to get everything set up. And you're, and, and one and only Susan is gonna be part of this event, so she's gonna be rolling with this. Okay, so I have another question. Well, maybe it was out of, Cranston? Okay, I don't know if Cranston's here, but I think he has a question coming in, or unless he's, it's somewhere else. Uh, okay, so, anyways, that's what's going on. If anybody has any questions about the lock being moved, uh, let me know, and I will try to answer more detail. Uh, Kitty is already starting to work on this, uh, once we have something set up, we will transform um, this, the lo, the location landmarks all there, and the lock also has a separate group, too. It's a separate music group, separate from Campbell Coast. Uh, that's important because of DJs, and also for people only interested in the music part of it. However, whenever we, then DJs send out notices, or whenever there's an event, we will always send to Campbell Coast as well. So, not only will we be sending notices to Campbell Coast, but we also send to the lock group, which is also, uh, will be a separate entity from Campbell Coast group. Okay, so then, so then, some people might have questions about, like, what's gonna happen to this place then if the lock is not here? So, that's a really good question. So, CK, CK brought this up. I noticed a couple other people brought this up, too. So, this, this whole venue right here is not gonna change. It's not gonna be called the lock anymore, but it's not gonna change. Uh, people could still use it for other events. It's just, just think of this as another event location. That's what this is gonna be, just another event location, so we can have the events here, too. It's just that the lock no longer will be here. So, another thing, too, is that we will have a portal from here to the new location. So, anybody with the old landmark here, or if somebody comes here, they're looking for the lock, they can easily, uh, go to this experience teleport and get to the new lock. We do not wanna make it difficult for people to know about the lock. The lock is what is gonna drive in a lot of traffic, uh, not only, you know, but the thing is, as we grow, um, and people know about these other landmarks, those places, too, will drive a lot of traffic. So, but the lock right now can bring in tons of traffic. You know, it's not just about the music thing and all of that. Uh, that's a way that we can really get, uh, get our membership growing, more people living around here, participating, all the community stuff that CK is gonna be setting up, and events with Owl, that's all gonna grow. Okay, so, let's see, there's a question, I think. Cranston had one, I guess he doesn't. It's not about the tier, is it, Cranston? The tier payment at the aerodrome? Um, okay, so, I didn't get, so let me ask Fenella. Uh, she has a question. Just a second, let me look at that. Okay, so Fenella, will there be an experi, okay, so yeah, this is exactly what I just said. So, yeah, there's gonna be a TP-based experience here, and also, that's a great idea. We, we wanna make people to come back here, too. So, again, you have to think about these locations as just landmark locations. They don't have to reside in this razor or this area, it's all gonna be Campbell Coast. So, basically, the lock, uh, we're starting the lock off in a six, in a one-quarter sim. Only part of that will be the lock, the rest of it will be CC group land. And then, and, and, and that, and we will create, the thing is, people like this village. When they're at the lock, they like to see the village and what it looks like, it's, it's a nice air village, right? Kitty did a great job, it looks great. Canal, all this stuff, right? So, the, the new lock will look, be the same. When people go to the lock, they'll, they will see nothing different than what they see now. There might be a couple of building changes, uh, with the office and stuff, but when they look out, they're gonna see the same thing. So, so anybody that was here on the last weekend, they'll see the same thing. We wanna make it look nice. Why not have a second village? Like, why, there's no reason for us not to limit ourselves just to one village. If people are, are people renting, and this place is full, then we have another opportunity to get, uh, more artists, uh, more people shops and residents, uh, there, so... Okay, so Cranston has a question. Let me just, uh, get that. So, okay, so, okay, so he said, "Would you be interested in opening up a space?" Okay, that's, that's a really good question. Okay, so Cranston says, "Would you be interested in opening up a space between the Glastonbally Forest and Pyramid Stage and the Campbell Coast Aerodrome, and making Glastonbally part of CC landmarks? There is a great spot to do that." Okay, so here's the thing with this. I, I am open to everything, um, but we, whoever is, I don't know who runs this sim, right? I know that you've been working on it, um, Cranston, a lot. So, the thing is, I need whoever owns this sim, or owns this concept or idea, uh, I would, uh, you know, just, they, they need to contact me, right? And, and there has to be a discussion as far as how we could, if this is gonna work out, and how it's gonna work out. So, that, that would be the very first step, is that, uh, you know, what's the plan? Uh, somebody who, whoever is the owner, or, or does, I'm not sure if it's you, Cranston, or there's some other group of people that are, are behind this, but that's the way to start. So, this way, you know, we're clear about that. Um, but that's the only way that we can really look at, you know, how that makes sense, right? Because right now, I don't know anything about it, except I seen some building over there. But that's a good, that's a good question. So, I would leave it like that for now. Uh, let's see, so man, okay, so, uh, alright, so anyways, uh, okay, so that's what we're doing with the lock, um, is there any questions around that? Other questions, just let me know, um. Okay, so we, so, okay, so I talked about CK, she's gonna do community, uh, okay, so here's the thing. Um, CK is, is taking over the community stuff and external events. I think that's important. You guys had that before, where people were just sending out notices about all kinds of external events. I, there's no problem with any of that, but we just need to make sure that it's, uh, it's, it's, it's not like a free-for-all, right? We can't have a free-for-all for doing this, um, you know, somebody saying, "Hey, come to my place for a kegger later on." You know, that, that kinda stuff's not gonna work. So, um, I think that everything, CK will be sending a notice about this, and everything will go through CK as far as vetting these types of events. We don't have a problem with that. We can also add these things to our schedule. I think it's important. External events, community groups, getting involved with external, um, entities, I think that's all important. Um, I, I am right on board with that. The only, you know, I had to put some place, things in place before we got some set up. I think stuff is set up now, um, and CK will take over with this stuff. Alright, so Cranston has another one. Okay, alright, no problem, Cranston, I, I got that. Okay, so, um, I, I can be on, okay, so one thing I can, Cranston just said, "Don't mean to put me on the spot," you know, like, I can, I'm fine with you putting on the spot, so... It's okay, you guys can ask me anything. You can, anything you want, throw it my face, I will have an answer for you. So, I don't have any problem, but thank you, thank you, Cranston. Um, alright, so not getting into a lot of questions today, uh, I didn't expect as many or as many people, because, uh, you guys, um, you know, pretty much, uh, you know, the first one was probably more important as I just came here, but, you know, progress uh, is also important, so I just wanted to make sure, you know, I was just transparent about all that. Uh, okay, so, let's see what else we've been doing. Okay, so we talked about roadside rentals, we also are, we also have added calendars and schedules to all the landmarks. So, if anybody has landmarks, um, that are important, you think, for CC, uh, then, uh, let, uh, let us know, because we will add those. We want, we wanna make it easy for people to do cool stuff. It doesn't ma, it doesn't have to be on CC group land, okay? Just like if we did something with, uh, you know, Glastonbally, you know, it doesn't have to be there. So, you know, it's, everything is open, um, you know, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna just say, "No, it's not," just because it's not here, we don't, so, you know, that's all, that, just, somebody has to just bring it up, right? So, we can take a look at it. So, don't have all the, um, information, we can't make, uh, we can't make, um, decisions for that. Okay, so Owl, too, she started, she has these, these art, uh, these art, weekly art things, or every two weeks. And she has been going with that. Owl will also manage the shops here, uh, so, and another thing to the shops and art galleries will all be in her mix. There's no, like, specific, uh, building for art galleries, no specific building for shops. Uh, we want them all to be together, and, uh, I, I think that's a cooler way to, uh, way to do it. That was also, uh, you know, people were suggesting that, and that's, that's the way to go. So, it's just a whole community. You got artists, you got residents, and you got shoppers, everything is together, so... Alright, so there's no other questions. I think we're gonna get close to Beer and, uh, Susan DJing sooner than I thought, then. Uh, does anybody have other questions? This is the time to do it. This is the time to do it. I will be, uh, having another, uh. Okay, here's another one here. Just a second. Okay, uh. Oh yeah, Cranston is just elaborating on the, uh, the Glastonbally, um. Is that how it's pronounced? Glastonbally? Does anybody know? Am I saying it right? Is that a, is that in Scotland? Glastonbally, what is it?
Yeah, it's Glastonbury, it's in Dorset.
Okay. You know, I was in, I was in Edinburgh. Is it called Edinburgh or Edinburgh? I was there for like three days. I loved it.
If you come from London, it's Edinburgh.
Edinburgh, okay, yeah, I, I, I went, uh, my goal when I went to England and Scotland. Was to drink as much different ale and have as much fish and chips as possible. And that's what I did. I survived. I was also there during Saint Patrick's Day, uh, in London, so that was, that was a great time, so. Uh, anyways, um, let's see. Yeah, the only problem I have with London though, is the subway system. I tell you now, it was tough to get, to figure out what to do. So, you know, but, uh, at the end of the trip, it got, it got better, so.
It absolutely stinks in the underground.
Yeah.
Absolutely awful. Worst place, you can feel the grit in your teeth.
Right, it was, it was tough, um, it was tough, it was tough, but, uh, at the end I think got it figured out, but it was all, it was all good. Alright, so Fenella has a question. Who can we look to for guidance on issue? Okay, so.
Can I ask a question about this decking?
Yeah, let me just answer Fenella's real quick. She just had a question. No problem, yeah, no problem. She was just, I was just about to answer her, she says, who can we look for guidance on issuing notice? Okay, so again, the, the notices, um, unless, you know, you're a team member. But if you want, if you have a certain external event or anything that you're interested in promoting to, uh, CC. All goes through CK. She will be sending a notice, she will be sending a notice about this. To the group, uh, like either today or tomorrow probably. She, she's just waiting for me to respond back. But everything just goes to CK. Uh, again, we don't have problems. She just needs to make sure that, you know, it's not a kegger type of, uh, thing that people want. Uh, or something weird, um, she just vets them, but, uh, you know, obviously. Uh, you know, anybody here, uh, you know, that I'm sure that the, the types of events are all gonna be, uh, really cool, so. Alright, go ahead, um.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the, the decking and the bar don't match to my eye. I know we got a lot of artists here, but the, the decking looks nice, but it sort of hits the bar and it changes color.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Well, Kitty, I mean, like, uh, I don't know if we can change that. I think that would be something to ask Kitty, uh, um. Directly, but I, 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 yeah, you, I agree with you, like, maybe. We can change the look and feel so it matches. It would be better, yeah. I totally agree. Alright, yeah, so, but, yeah.
Yeah, go on. How, uh, what's, what's the situation with DJing at these events then here?
Okay, yeah, 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 what we're gonna do.
I, I used to do, I used to do, uh, Big Unbeaten's and I used to do it on a platform and you know the, the history of that. Um, but, um. It, it's like, uh, well, I mean, I see Susan's just, just got on the, on the place in as a DJ up on the stage. Um, and I think before that, it was mostly girl DJs, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I, I know where you're going with this. Um, I think that this place can be you. Okay, so here's the thing, we're moving the lock over. Uh, I don't wanna cause any confusion in this two week period, but I think, I know where you're going. I think it would be a great idea for you to host your, your, your event here. This is gonna be open for any type of event. Um, we're not gonna just, this is not gonna suddenly just be dead zone. Um, so, you know, like work this type of stuff out with, uh, with CK, um, come up. Uh, you know, come up with what you wanna do. If you have this, if you wanna bring that beans thing, the beans, what is it? Beans and biscuits?
It, it's really popular, it's really popular, but I, I wasn't meaning so much that because, uh. Uh, I mean, lovely owl, lovely owl built me a little stage down by her, down by her own little bit of land there. And I was, I was really pleased about that, but I felt like I was being shoved off into a corner.
No, that, yeah, that, I think.
And, and suddenly we had a big event here, um, three days or whatever. And, uh, not, no, uh, you know, a big, big main event. And it was loads of DJs that I, to be honest with you, I'd never heard of.
Really? Okay.
I haven't seen them here. I haven't seen them in Campbell. If you're building a community, surely we should have more community DJs. I was surprised that Susan wasn't invited.
Oh, Su- that Susan's in now. Susan is in the next one. Uh, no, no, the reason is, is because there are certain reasons for this. Uh, let me, let's not, okay, let's just talk about the events here right now. I totally agree, you know, this location can be used for any type of event. That, you know, people might want, you know, whether it's the beans and bingo or some other thing. Uh, this all, this has to be organized with, uh, you know, Owl or CK. And we can start getting those things here, but it has to happen after we, uh, transition the lock out of here. The lock will still be here. Until September tenth, right? So until that happens, uh, obviously it's a great time to start planning this stuff, right? So if there's certain things that you want, you want the guild DJ or whatever, I'm totally up for that. I'm totally cool about it. The lock, I, the lock was here, it's, I know how to bring in traffic, right? So I had to get this thing going. It's doing what it needs to do. Let's, you know, I don't have a problem with, there's no problem having these other types of events here. You know, so that is one thing I just wanna make sure everybody's clear about. Like, you know, I don't want people to think that, oh, this is, you know, th- there's, there can't be other things to be done here. Or confused that this, this area here is not, is off limits. That is not the case whatsoever. This is, it can be used for any types of events that make sense, okay? Alright, so, um, so that, I hope that answered your question for, and I hope that if you wanna bring it back here, uh, you know, that'd be amazing. So, you know, it's a big stage here, throw it on there. I'll eat some beans too. You know, in fact, I ate beans when I was in Scotland. Uh, for breakfast, you know, that doesn't happen here in US.
We all have beans with our breakfast.
That's, yeah, but in Scotland, Scotland, they had it, like, uh, on the menu, like.
Black pudding as well, so be very aware if you eat that stuff.
I don't know. I, I will not touch that stuff. Alright, so I know what that is. I, I will avoid that like the plague, so. Okay, so, uh, okay, so I covered the, uh, the lock. I covered, um, what's going on here. Um, Yuki, again, she's taken over the aerodrome. Um, Kitty is still, you know, designing architect. Owl is focusing on the village. Uh, CK will do external, uh, you know, community and external events. I'm like, can't wait to see that happen. And, uh. And we, we already have started on different plans around the different sims. But again, this is not an overnight thing. This is not even a couple of month thing. This is gonna take months. Uh, to continue to transform this, uh, and, and build, uh, what we have. So basically, you know, like, before I came here, I mean, the, the plan is, is still is to retain all this. I mean, just because I come in here, uh, you know, just because things are changing, doesn't mean it's gonna. I'm, I'm trying to keep what you guys lo- love, right? And, and sometimes it might be, it might seem like that isn't the case, but it is, it's farthest from the case. And that's why I have these town meetings. This way you guys are reminded that, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not just some guy behind, um. You know, an IM or a chat, right? So, you know, I, I do take, I, I, I want you to make sure you guys understand, look, know me, uh, personally as much as possible. Uh, I don't see any other IMs. Do you guys have any other questions, uh, before Susan rolls with her set? And the beer kegs flow? You guys can all go on voice too and just like go crazy if you want. I don't, I don't care. Susan, I see. Sue, I knew Susan would be the first one. She can, she can. Susan, Susan cannot keep silent for long. This is, I think, the longest I've heard her not say anything.
It's a DJ thing. DJs can't resist talking. Although Susan really needs to adjust her decking.
On the eighteenth, I'm not, I'm not allowed to talk.
Darling, it's, it's all good.
I have to do a silent DJ set. Gonna play the sounds of silence for two hours.
Yeah, that's right. No, one hour. It's a one hour set.
Yep, one hour.
One hour sets. The reason why, okay, so I think one hour, I think one hour sets are better because two. This way you get more variety of war, uh, music and also usually people won't even stay two hours, right? So you get one hour sets, people can go from one to the other. I think, uh, that's the way to go. And, and then I'm, then you're, you're making, then we're trying to make people DJs larger than life, right? So.
I think you need two hours, two hours, because, uh.
Two hours is normal.
That only lasts an hour, then they're not very good DJ. The last party I did was faulty constant all the way through it. And that was from the moment I started till the moment I had to throw everybody off the conga.
Okay, right, okay, so here's the thing. Uh, here's the thing, Far. Okay, so I think there's a time and place for that. I, that four hours, why not? So here's the thing, we have regular weekly sets here too. Those are two hours. I agree with that. Uh, but these events, we're gonna have, oh, that's one thing I didn't say. So these, there's gonna be Saturday events starting the eleventh, every Saturday, eight hours of music. All one hour sets.
We can still do naked Saturdays.
Yeah, you can do, yeah, yeah, they're, they're not gonna conflict. Th- this is gonna be, the, the, these are locked. On Saturdays, it's specific to this, it's gonna always be every Saturday. It's gonna, we're gonna differentiate ourselves in different ways, right? For other places. So on Saturdays only, we're gonna have this eight hours of music, one hour sets. People can stay here and go through all types of music, but we still have the two hour regular sets that are during the week. Right, so, so like.
If you, if you wanna build a community, you need DJs that are part of the community. And you need DJs that get a rapport with the people in the community. That, that's what we've, that's what we've done over at, uh, Belisarius. And it's a proper community thing. Bringing in DJs, when people have tried to drop, do events. With DJs and singers and people that no one's ever heard of, they bomb.
Well, that's, but that's not the case here. I mean, these people can bring, uh, the, the, I don't think anybody can really bomb. Like, it, people, there's always somebody that wants to listen to different types of music or different DJs, whether they're local or not. And so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The music is the food of life and I, I was asked to do, uh, an industrial dance set. Uh, cause I do all sorts of sets and I've never even heard of industrial dance and I did industrial dance set. I now have it on my own personal list. I love industrial dance.
So, let, let me, let me just explain something really quickly, okay? So here's the thing, there isn't limits to what can be done here in regard to, uh, music events, okay? Let me just categorize this very clearly so you guys understand. One is we have lock events, okay? Those are either regular set, two hour set, lock events that are regularly scheduled. Like right now, we have two DJs, Floss and Candy on Saturdays. That will extend. I'm trying to get a, a lock manager. I, I, I'm not gonna be running this forever, right? So that, that's the goal too, is to get a lock manager who can do this. So the thing is, we have two hour, so that's one thing. We have two hour sets scheduled anytime during the week, regular occurrences. Two, we have these Saturday events. They're gonna be one hour sets by any types of, we're not gonna have the same DJs. I'm, we already have people filling the slots already from all the way through October. So I'm, we're getting people filled in on the slots already. Third is that what you said, one off events can be. Just second, one off simultaneous, one off random events can be done at any time on this stage. Uh, you, you don't have to, we don't have to have any sets at all. Uh, you just have to become part of the DJ group. And you could say, hey, I wanna do a set real quick. I wanna do something here and play at the stage, uh, for an hour or so. That, that's not a problem, uh, as far as, the, the, there's, we're not limiting anybody or anything, from any, doing anything. In any type of, of format. So the farm, this allows us to do all those formats. Allows people, like your guild stuff, they can come in here, the DJs that are vetted, they can come in here, do their event whenever they want. Notice is sent out, boom, you're, you're there. Two, you have these, um, regular set DJs. And three, you have the Saturday, uh, event DJs. And so that's, that's, and all of those. All of that will bring in different types of people, uh, because they like different types of music or whatever.
Next thing I must say actually for, uh, bringing people in, I mean, there is the idea that, uh.
Who's talking?
Cranston, sorry.
Okay, oh, that's right.
If you have the DJs that are part of the community, that's one thing also. But the other flip side of the coin is, if you have DJs who aren't part of the community, they bring in their people. To introduce them to the Campbell Coast.
Yes, exactly.
Something that also should be.
Yeah, exactly.
That's how I got here, is from something completely separate from Campbell Coast.
Right, and already, already people are IMing and saying, you know, from different people, they say, wow, you know, like, if somebody else. Referred them to us and now they're part of the community. So that's exactly right, Cranston, like. These people bringing in, like these DJs, let's just take for example, the DJs on the set on, on Saturday. Some of these people like Cranston, Cranston could pull in a lot too. Uh, you guys can, they can, you can pull in tons of people. They'll get familiar with the, with the community. They might rent a shop, right? They might do a gallery, whatever, or might do like a road, uh, you know, like go to Novatron for a sailing trip. So that's how, so it's important for us to, all these things will help us grow and become, um, more familiar with Campbell Coast. And get the community bigger and it will have more fun things. And it's happening right now. It, it, it's, it's happening right now. It's, it, right now it's gonna be a little slow, but as these things, as we're doing more things, uh, you know, like, and then also Cranston's, uh, ideas. Everybody's ideas, I, this will grow. There's, uh, there's no limits to what we can do. You know, I, last, during this last month, I had to put procedures in place, right, to get everything organized. And I think now we can start like really growing this out. So, um, is everybody bored now or is, is it beer time? Music time?
Beer thirty? What?
I think you should roll, Susan. I think we're all ready to go.
I'm trying to send out a notice and doing it right. It takes me really long time to send out a notice.
That's because you're talking. Alright, guys.
Problem, cause I keep putting the wrong bloody time and date on it. I TP'd half of Belisarius up in a mountain somewhere when I was doing a party. And everybody was jumping into my box saying, what the hell am I doing on the mountain? You having a laugh? Luckily, I managed to rescue them all, but, you know, it wasn't a good, wasn't a good moment. That's the trouble with being dyslexic. I need an assistant all, all the time.
You need, yeah, well, get yourself one, so.
I keep trying. I'm a nice bloke, but it just doesn't work. I tend to, uh, you know, I'm looking at Susan sideways, but she's not.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, do, but the thing, do you use the, the question is, do you use deodorant, Far? It's important.
Yeah, yeah, I use deodorant. I, I keep changing it as well. Odie toilet I wear, but I think it smells like a toilet. That's a trouble. It's just, that's why, that's why, look, you've just moved away as well, bloody hell.
Alright, I think, uh, I think, uh, let's see here.
I'm ready.
I think everybody's ready, right?
Suzanne, are you ready, my darling?
Are you ready, my darling?
I'm ready, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Alright, let's do it. Let's get the, let's get the kids going.
Here we go, great meeting.
She's cooling us down. Thank you, Jolly.
Yeah, I'm washing everything.
You do that, keep us cool. Have you got a boyfriend, Jolly?
Thank you, guys. I'm, I'm getting up voice, thank you.
I'm gonna wink a lotus now. Hello, lotus.
Say hello. CK, bye.
Oh my god, you're playing my tune.
Thank you.
That's coming through your mic. And the turn light's off, okay.